Well, good evening. We'll reconvene the public session. And will the city attorney please report on actions taken in closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council went in and met in closed session on the three real property negotiations. No reportable action was occurred. Council gave direction to the negotiators. Council did not meet or discuss item number two, which was conference with labor negotiator.
Thank you, Colin. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance by council member Catherine Alman, and then the invocation by Pastor Fred.
The flag of the United States of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we bow our heads in prayer and go before God. Father, we thank you and we bless you today. We thank you for Norco, the city of Norco, for the city council members, the city managers, the city attorneys, public works, and city clerks. All those who will come together as one in a unity to make this city a represent a model city for the nation. You said righteousness will exalt a nation, but sin will bring a reproach. And Lord, I thank you, Lord, that you said in your word that if two or more gathered together in your name, say, "We have a unity here." You said that you were blessed, and I'm asking you, God, according to your word, bless this city. You said that we are not to lean on our own understanding, but acknowledge you in all our ways, and you would direct our path. Proverbs three, verse five and six. And the city here are acknowledging you now so that you can come into the affairs and that this city will be a model city for the world. I ask you this now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fred. Always so good to see you. Okay, we're going to move into presentations, and this is Hispanic Heritage Month. And I'm going to ask council member Bash to do the presentation, but also to deliver some Norco history. Kevin?
So the mayor's made quite a mistake on this one. So I'm actually very proud of our community. We, a lot of people don't know this, but Norco actually has an extraordinary history in terms of Hispanic culture. Prior to World War II, like many, many cities, there were deed restrictions. Hispanics could only live in certain areas. Once World War II hit, though, all of a sudden that all went away. Norco's never had a segregated school. In fact, prior to World War II, the sole elementary school was not segregated, whereas Corona, Riverside, the Chino area, Eastvale were all segregated. You had to live in certain areas, the redlining, things like that. We've also had some extraordinary people that did extraordinary things that just happened to be Hispanic. So tonight, September fifteen through October fifteen is National Hispanic Heritage Month. By presenting, we're going to honor it by presenting a proclamation to members that the community have contributed to the development of the city of Norco. And what's really nice about this is there's a very, very broad spectrum, from young to not-so-young, to those that are no longer with us, but they did things that were absolutely extraordinary, not just in Norco, not just in Riverside County, but in California. Now, the first person I'm going to bring up is somebody who, I actually know his wife because she's a city manager someplace. And he owns a very important store here in the city of Norco. Can I have Louis Miramantes come up, please? Is he here? He's too busy counting tomatoes. Anyway, if you haven't been to Miramantes, you need to go there. That's really an amazing family. Like I say, his wife is city manager, Moreno Valley, right? Moreno Valley? Paris. Sorry, Paris. I'm sorry, sorry. You know, Paris, Hemet, Moreno Valley, they all kind of run together, you know? So anyway, we'll save that for him. The next one I want to honor is somebody that taught me how to throw a spiral football. And I know the Melindas families that's here, they probably also knew Dr. Ramirez. Dr. Ramirez was a good friend of mine. You know what? So maybe we'll start with, I'll tell you what, we'll jump to Cy Melindas. Now, I never knew Cy as Cy when I was a kid. He was Mr. Melindas. Good friend of my parents. And I'm going to kind of read a little bit about this gentleman. He was an amazing person, very unusual city manager for the city of Norco, very involved in the community. He was born April twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-nine, in New Mexico. He attended Woodrow Wilson High School in Los Angeles, where he starred on the Mules cross-country team and track team. And he served as student body president. Cy, as he was known, graduated from the University of Southern California with a degree in public administration. And he ran track under famed coach and Corona High graduate Jess Hill. Later, Jess Hill came to Norco to dedicate Neil Snipes Park. Neil Snipes played for him at Corona High School and was also an All-American for Jess Hill at Long Beach City College. Neil Snipes, as many of you know, was the first Norconian killed in action. He was killed at Tarawa. The day he died, literally, the entire towns of Corona and Norco came together to the Norco Community Center because they couldn't believe he was gone. Anyway, I remember talking to Cy, and he told me that he was so impressed with the fact that Jess Hill remembered him. And so, anyway, that was kind of cool. So anyway, during the Korean conflict, Cy was the first lieutenant in the Air Force. He flew twenty-one combat missions, and he earned the Air Medal for heroism. In nineteen sixty-two, he became assistant city administrator for San Gabriel, California. In nineteen sixty-nine, now understand, in nineteen sixty-nine, Corona was still engaged in redlining. They still had segregated schools. Riverside had segregated schools. Chino had segregated schools. Los Angeles had segregated schools. San Bernardino had segregated schools. And what our sort of Hicksville City Council did was we decided to hire the first Hispanic city manager in the history of Riverside County and most likely in the history of California. He was hired as our city manager, and he was, I remember, as a kid, he was amazing. Amongst his many achievements, and you know, it's funny, some of these achievements, you kind of don't understand until you get on city council. But he laid the ground for work for our modern water, sewer, road improvements. He established a more comprehensive fire protection service, oversaw the dissolving of the parks and community services districts, and placed those services and assets under city council. And it must be noted that during his tenure as a city manager, it was probably Norco's craziest, most volatile time of all time. There was one time when a bunch of people didn't want potholes filled because they were afraid city slickers would come to town. And he was literally attacked at city hall by people on horseback. He had a wonderful singing voice, a wonderful cook. And his tenure ended in nineteen seventy-six, but he maintained a home in Norco until he passed in twenty thirteen. It's very interesting, Cy was a pioneering Latino who refused all honors associated with his Hispanic heritage. And during interviews, he insisted his only troubles were with council members. And, but he was treated well and with respect by residents. From nineteen seventy-six until his retirement, Cy was a general contractor. And I am really pleased to say that he is survived by his wife, or was, of fifty-nine years. And Mickey is in the audience right there. So let's give her a big hand. This is a photograph of Cy with Jess Hill. Of course, Jess Hill was, Jess Hill was famous because he broke the color line while a coach at USC. And he was the first one to take African-Americans to Austin, Texas, where it was illegal for a black man to play on a football field with a white man. And he said, "Well, you know what? You need our gate. If my boys don't play, we're leaving." And they started walking out of town. He was also famous because, again, at USC, pre-World War II and during World War II, you just didn't have blacks or Hispanics on your track team. So in some ways, and I can't confirm this yet, Cy may well have been one of the first Hispanics to actually run on the USC track team. The next one, so I'm going to, I'll call the family up here in a second. Now, I'm going to go to Augie Ramirez. So there's Augie right there. He was born in Corona in the old maternity hospital on Main to Epe Musino and Mercedes Ramirez, both from Mexico in nineteen twenty-nine. His father, interestingly enough, was known as Epe. And he worked for Norco founder Rex Clark and directly under Captain Cuthbert Gully, who was the community engineer. And Epe was one of Clark's most trusted employees and eventually became the keeper of the wells on Bluff. How about that, Chad? And that's the hot springs that fed the Norconian. The Ramirez family was the only Hispanic family allowed to swim at the Norconian pools. Now, this is how things went in those days. Epe got in an accident at one point, and they put him in jail because he was a Mexican. And Rex Clark went before the judge and said, "This is the most honorable Mexican I've ever met." So that's sort of a two-edged slap, and he got him out of jail. But the Norconian, as you know, was a segregated resort. And the Ramirez family was the only family allowed to actually swim in the pool, which is interesting because at that point, except on Mondays, you could not swim in the Corona pool, except on Monday. And then what would happen is afterwards, they drained it and cleaned it. That was in nineteen forty-four. There's so many people that say, "Oh, yeah, I remember those days." No, you don't. It was nineteen forty-four. Anyway, Augie went to school only knowing Spanish. He attended Norco Elementary School, which is now our community center. And that was the only community school, elementary school, that was not segregated in pretty much all of Riverside County. Education was important to his parents, both of whom only had rudimentary educations. Augie was encouraged to work hard and learn that through perseverance, you attain any goal you set for yourself. He was an excellent student, excellent athletics. Went to the University of California, Berkeley, and then found out he didn't have the money, so then he couldn't go. So he went to Chaffee Junior College, where he was a quarterback, and went to the University of California, Santa Barbara, and then got his master's at UCLA and his teaching credential. He eventually got a doctorate in education administration at USC. And if you ever met Augie, and I had the pleasure in the last years of his life that I got to hang with him, he had Trojan stuff everywhere. He was a true Trojan. He served in the Army during the Korean War. He got the rank of corporal in ten weeks, a pretty smart guy, and he received several medals. Then he began to teach. He eventually became the principal, my principal, at Norco Junior High. The reason that he was so important is Augie was the first person hired as a Hispanic superintendent of schools in the entire state of California. And when you stop and think, many schools, they forgot him. Many schools, twenty, thirty, forty years later, said, "Oh, we're the first." But the reality of what is, is that he was the first. And he held that job until nineteen ninety, something like that. Anyway, he met his wife, Connie. They were married forever. And then one of the things that I need to talk about, can you put it in the next picture? There he is getting the keys to his first principal job. There he is when he was signing when they named the school after him over in Eastvale. Now, this is, I'm sorry, I'm in the picture. For whatever reason, he and I were very good friends. But I want to direct your attention to the lady on the left. That's Augie in the middle, who I could never call Augie. I call him Mr. Ramirez. That's his wife, Mrs. Ramirez. But to the left is Eva Mejia. Now, understand, they grew up in Norco. They, they grew up in a house right by where our wealth site is now. And her husband and they started a very important business. And they put everything on the line. They eventually lived, they lived in the barrio in Corona. And they fought hard against redlining, housing redlining, segregation of schools, and they fought to get people on the Corona City Council. And they were one of the first families to literally break out of the barrio and they moved into houses that were in the white neighborhood. The courage of that woman was amazing. And she, she was the national lady of the year for the National League of United Latin American Citizens for her work with young Latin boys and girls. And she was an absolute true hero. This is an amazing family. Understand, their parents actually couldn't read or write. And they, they went on to be extraordinary people. Find my other notes here. And then tonight, we also want to go to the younger crowd. And Allison Nueves and Myra Orozco, is that right? Did I say it right? Myra. So I don't have a lot to say about them, but I talked to councilwoman Alman, and I said, "So what is it about them that you, you felt they should come in?" And she said, "They're awesome." What else can you say? So in just a second, I'm going to be bringing them up along with everybody else. And then finally, the Norco Mounted Posse Executive Board. This was Ted's. The reason is, is because it is a very commingled board. One of the things I'm, I'm very proud of, of Norco is we have always been a very integrated community. I mean, I went to school with all Cy's sons. I know there's issues. I know there's crazies out there. But I'm very proud of the fact that we kind of get a bad rap. But the truth of the matter is, is that we have a huge Latino population in Norco, and we always have. And it seems to me, there's always been a cohesiveness and a getting along. So first, is Mr. Miramantes here? Did he get here? All right. Maybe what I'll do now is I'll read the proclamation first. I should probably do that, right, Mr. Mayor? So, "Whereas every year Hispanic Heritage Month is recognized to celebrate the contributions, diverse cultures, and extensive histories of Latino and Hispanic Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And in nineteen sixty-eight, President Lyndon B. Johnson recognized Hispanic Heritage Week beginning on September fifteen, which included the Independence Days of several Latin American countries. And in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan extended the observance to cover a thirty-day period and designated September fifteen through October fifteen as Hispanic Heritage Month. And since nineteen eighty-eight, every American president has designated September fifteen through October fifteen as Hispanic Heritage Month and endorsed a specific theme. And the, and the twenty-twenty-two theme honors the diversity and contributions of Latino and Hispanic Americans who have strengthened the nation. And the city of Norco recognizes, recognizes its local Latino and Hispanic history and reflects on the strides we have made to ensure all citizens feel accepted and included. And the city of Norco is a diverse community that is honored to celebrate the history and legacies of Latino and Hispanic community members who have contributed to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of our city, state, and country. Now therefore, I Greg Newton, mayor of the city of Norco, I Kevin, on behalf of the mayor of city of Norco, and the city council do hereby proclaim September fifteen, October fifteen, twenty-twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month." So what I'd like to do at this point is first, unfortunately, the family of Dr. Ramirez couldn't be here tonight. They've had an illness in the family. I'm going to bring up the Melindas family. If you could come up and maybe if you'd like, say a few words.
Good evening. When Kevin brought this up to me on the phone a few, a couple of weeks ago, he asked me if I wouldn't mind coming and saying a few words. And of course, I said, "Kevin, I'd be honored," you know? We grew up here, we came from LA County. And when we came here in nineteen sixty-nine, there was only one traffic signal in the whole city, on Sixth and Hamner. And then eventually, they got the one and second and Hamner, and we thought, "Whoa, we're hitting big town here." And my mom, she would cry a lot because we'd come from the city, you know? And she's like, "Cy, why did you bring us here?" You know? But, but it ended up being a great move. I mean, people worry about maybe Hispanics coming to someplace like Norco, but all three of my brothers and I were all student body president. And when Kevin's mentioning, talking about certain people like Augie Ramirez, he was a good friend of my dad. And I remember the night that my dad resigned from city, I was giving a presentation as a student body president in Norco High. And I was at the school board, and Augie walked right up to me. And he was like, "Are you, are you guys okay?" I'm like, "Yeah, we're fine," you know? And he was an awesome man. But also, we had other families here, like Kevin Bash and his family were great friends to our family. And if you look at it, here we are forty-five, fifty years later, and Norco's still pretty much the same. It's a small town. My wife and I sell real estate in Corona, Norco. And I love giving people tours of Corona and giving them history of Corona, going all the way back to the early nineteen hundreds. And I also love giving tours of Norco when they're looking at homes in Norco. And it's just an amazing town. And I tell people who are wanting to buy houses in Norco, "There is not a better town in the whole country to raise your, your family." What the heck? So I'm just glad my brother Cy is here, my mom, my wife, our kids, grandkids, and I just want to thank you.
I can't really add that much to what my brother just said, but wonderful experiences. I'll just give a couple anecdotal things that happened. My brother remembers, but I don't. We were, you know, you tailgate it before you go into USC games. And Jess Hill walked by, the athletic director of USC, national championships, very, very highly regarded guy. And he goes up to my dad, my brother's, you know, having his sandwich or whatever, goes, "Hi, Cy." That's amazing to me, that that sort of thing was what my dad was, what my dad, how my dad was. And I can't think of really another story, but I've got a lot of them. I just, I just can't think of anything right now. But thank you very much for this honor, and we very much appreciate it.
So now, I'm going to bring up Allison Nueves and Myra Orozco. So what I'd like you to do is tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much for this honor. Um I wasn't sure what I was coming for, but now I see. Um so I um
You're awesome.
I guess I'm awesome. So I was born in Mexico, I came to this country when I was five years old. Um I was in Lulac, you mentioned Lulac, one of the, I was the um the president of Lulac at my high school. So I am very familiar with the League of United Latin American Citizens. Um so being a representative for my community has always been something that's near and dear to my heart. And so I always try to be a role model for, for, for girls that are, you know, trying to be somebody. And um so right now, currently, I am the Assistant Principal at Parkridge Elementary. I'm, I was the Assistant Principal at Norco Elementary last year. So yes, I love being at Norco Elementary. Um prior to that, I was a elementary school teacher, also here at Norco for Washington Elementary in our dual immersion program where we promote bilingualism and, and cultural, um you know, inclusivity and heritage. Um so I, you know, I just, I guess she thinks I'm awesome. But I'm just doing, you know, what I, what I need to do for, for my community and for my kids to be a role model to them so that they can also grow up to be, you know, good, strong Hispanics. Yeah.
Hi, everyone, um my name is Allison Nieves. And unlike everyone here, I'm just a college student. But um Councilmember Catherine Alman thinks it was Yeah, thinks I'm awesome. Um I just helped her on her campaign, you know, reach out to voters um in twenty twenty, like the whole summer. Um I was happy to do it when I found out about her wishes for the city. Like I've lived here my whole life, thanks to my parents who immigrated from Oaxaca, Mexico. Um they came here twenty-three years ago because he loves horses. Um and I'm just happy to be a member of the community and hopefully politically inspire other, other young members of the community to, to get active and, you know, try to make a change in the community. Yes, they're here.
Uh Norco Mounted Posse Executive Board. Veronica.
Hey, just want to make a clarification, I'm not on the executive board, but since I'm representing the Norco Mounted Posse, I get to say something. So I quickly wrote something. The Norco Mounted Posse is a volunteer organization dedicated to helping out our lovely city of Norco. We do trail rides, we help needy families during Christmas, we provide security events at the Nellie Weaver Hall. And our favorite um thing that we organize is by all means, the best rodeo in the city of Norco. It's held in August, the best rodeo. Okay, one of the things that the Norco Mounted Posse has, they have another little group within the group. They have the Junior Norco Mounted Posse, which is formed of local youth here in the city of Norco. Not only do they work during the rodeo, they do various events out in the community. Community, they do outreach events. One of the members of the Junior Mounted Posse is really involved in um Mexican rodeo charrería. And so he's been volunteering his time going out to different Cub Scout meetings in the city of Norco, Eastvale, and Corona, showing them the art of trick roping. So we're really proud that our Junior Mounted Posse is taking on the lead and show, paying it forward, organizing uh events that are helping not only the youth, but also our senior centers as well. So, thank you.
They're my bodyguards.
We have our meetings last Wednesdays of the month. We need, we always take a new members, please join us, we always have the doors open.
And Kevin, the one thing, the reason I brought it is, they carry on the cultural existence of Norco with the lifestyle and the horses. And whether you call them Cabalados, or you call them Cowboys, these people, and especially the board, they carry that tradition. And a lot of their members carry the heart of rodeo all the way through from, it doesn't matter you were in American or, or Mexican rodeo. These guys live it every day, so we appreciate that.
So I know I took too much time at this, I'm sure the mayor is kind of going. But the truth of the matter is, our Hispanic culture here in Norco and Corona is super important. And one of the things a lot of people don't know is it was buried. It was just buried. And it wasn't until an author named Don Williamson began to write about it that we began to realize the importance of Lulac, the importance of the nineteen fifties. I mean, I don't know if you know this, but in the nineteen fifties, um Hispanics were not allowed to join the white American Legion and started the Joe Dominguez Tru. Interestingly enough, they came to Norco for their meetings. And they were welcomed with open arms. And those are all things that are forgotten. But what's really was forgotten were the struggles. And there are Eva Mejia Ramirez. Um those were brave people who put everything on the line. They could have lost their businesses, they could have lost all kinds of things. And um and Si, I mean, I'm sure it was not easy for him. I mean, he was the first, the first Hispanic city manager. And uh so I'm, I'm proud to talk about that heritage. And what's nice is, is that we're not going to forget it. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging.
Thank you, Kevin. I think we all appreciate your knowledge and the history you have of our community. And it, it, it's always good to understand that Norco is a very diverse city. Okay, so we'll move forward with uh City Council reports on regional boards. And I'll call upon Mayor Protem Grunmeyer to start council communications.
So on October third, we had the City Schools Committee meeting. This is the first one we've had in almost a year, I believe. And uh there's several new people with the school district, there's some new people with the city as well. So we were able to start the meeting with uh an activity to develop norms for how the group will operate going forward. So that was certainly beneficial. And we were able to discuss some current topics, most of which center around uh traffic and issues specific to our local schools here in Norco. Uh but again, namely, traffic and, and potential mitigations for that. And I am so proud of Kevin, always goes forward with those big asks in our meetings. And unashamedly so, and he even says, they're big asks, but we're going to put them on the table anyways. And advocates for our, our Norco schools and, and getting their fair share of improvements and monies from the school districts. So uh kudos to Kevin for that during the meeting as well. And it was a beneficial meeting. I did ask for clarification at the end of the meeting on what the roles and responsibilities are as far as the city and the school district. And the school board will be clarifying a lot of that at one of their upcoming meetings as well. So I'm looking forward to a strong collaboration with the district moving forward.
Thank you, Robin. Catherine?
On September twenty-second, I attended the Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Authority Board Meeting. And it was business as usual, nothing new to report.
So just a couple of things. One, I want to clarify, Robin, thank you, you were kind, but it's a tag team. Uh the reason I want the, that we deserve the lights at all the fields is because the original baseball fields were actually graded and built by Norco residents. So we had lights, we put the lights in ourselves, so I believe we deserve them. Uh the only thing I have to, that I have a little concern about, and I think that we may need to send yet another letter to Riverside City Council, is at the Riverside Conservation Authority meeting, they talked about the fire that occurred up in um the Hemet area. And essentially, what happened was is something leaned against uh one of the power lines. And apparently, that sparked, and that's what caused the fire. And I had a nice chat with our chief over there. Um the fact is, is that if that were to happen in Norco, because it's essentially the same technology, if that were to happen in our riverbed, there's, there's a very good chance it could be really catastrophic. And we've already had two serious fires that, thank God, the wind turned, and Cal Fire, and all those other stuff. I mean, I still don't know how they stopped the fire on the northeast side of our city. I don't know, I, I did the tour of that. And I did a tour of the Hemet Fairview Fire. And um I don't know, I talked to the chief and he kind of said, well, fire's fire and there's fuel. But that was kind of low brush, which I guess is what drives fires. But it seems to me, you start getting stuff up in those trees and it's going to be bad. Um so I think that maybe we need to remind Riverside, find out what they're doing. I think, you know, just send a, an email or a letter to Steve Hemmenway and just say, you know, how's it going? They've hired somebody to come in and find and figure out the cost. Um we, I think we have some real allies on that City Council. We have uh Councilwoman Cervantes, I think we have obviously Steve Hemmenway. And I think we have the mayor on our side in this too. So I'm not sure who to send the letter to, but maybe, maybe even just a phone call to see how it's going. And I'll talk to Steve. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted?
I was pretty busy as, as we started and since they were slow in August and September. But come back, uh LaFco, a lot of new legislative laws are being done, essentially revolving around districts and that. And our county is going to be pushing to get rid of the, the pocket areas, those county pocket areas. And we have two in our city, so we may look at that in the future. Under One Water, One Watershed, that's part of the SOPA program. Uh they announced the, uh we finally approved of the water projects under Prop One monies for round two. Uh Riverside County is going to have four of them, uh none here, uh except the J C S D project did get approved, so that's the closest thing. And if you are a frequent user of the Lake Elsinore, uh they're going to try to mitigate that, the algae bloom up there with some projects, so that'll help. Uh went to the Riverside Transit Agency meeting. And real quick, uh free bus rides on New Year's Eve and this year on Election Day. So we want to get people to vote, so absolutely, they're going to have free rides for, if you're heading for the polling place. So that's a good thing. Uh it's not, it did have an R C T C, but we did get an update from R C T C. And this is a good thing if uh in our state, Governor Newsom vetoed A B twenty-four thirty-eight. And that would have codified the Climate Action Plan for transportation infrastructure projects by requiring that specific state transportation funding programs incorporate components of the Climate Action Plan and into its guidelines. Uh R C T C has led the way in opposition to the bill. And it would have restricted the state transportation funding in our area that it would qualify for. So we're glad the governor saw the light. There was a lot of people that uh in transportation committees throughout the state that told him, please don't sign this, please don't sign it, along with a couple of state senators. So thank goodness he listened and said, nope. So I appreciate that. And uh LaFco, and then the community cleanup, and I'm going to let Chad, I don't want to steal his thunder. But Chad and, and Michelle, your volunteer, Julie, tell Julie, thank you very much. Everybody else that helped out there, I know Dana and Diane were there, and Kevin was there. Uh those that came, it wasn't as big as it was last year, but we sure threw a lot of trash away, so. And it helps, and it's amazing. And I did tend the W R C O G meeting where I'm the, I have to do my uh presentation for them for O A. And I didn't realize that there's a cleanup program, the W R C O G. You think how long we've been doing this, we've been doing it a lot longer than they, they come up with this idea. So kudos to how our agreement is with the waste manager on this, so. And that's about it. And I do appreciate everybody that attended the ceremony for the Gold Star Family Program. And today, Eat Program, and I'll, if the mayor wants to talk about that, that was interesting. And then we had coffee with a cop today. Thanks, guys, appreciate that. Love Polly Spies, so it's a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. All those events, I also attended with Kevin and Ted. But as far as regional, I have nothing to report. Uh we do have a Board of Directors meeting tomorrow for the Chino Basin Desalter Authority, which I'll report on at the next meeting. Okay, uh going to go to consent calendar, and I'd like to move item two G and change that to discussion item five B. Do I, do we need to do a motion or just move it? Okay, so be it. Um are there any items that need to be pulled off the consent calendar? Hearing none, do we have any public comments?
I have no public comments on items on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Uh I'll ask for a motion to, to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, Dana. Uh moving into public comments, I'll call upon the city clerk, please.
Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. I have one public comment for Teresa Edwards.
Good evening. Hi. Yeah, just pull the torch, it's on.
Okay, hi, um my name's Teresa Edwards, I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission. I uh wanted to come over tonight and apologize for not being here on the twenty-first of September when you guys discussed the candidates for the Historical Preservation Commission. We usually know what's going on with the, with your agenda. And I feel that it's our responsibility to know what's on your agenda. But for some reason, last time Carolyn and I both missed it. And we make the habit of watching you guys on this livestream. So when you came on and started talking about, we were both like, huh. And then uh Mr. Hoffman said, is there anybody here from the Historic Preservation Commission? And I went, oh, God. So I apologize for that, because we should have been here. And uh we want to recognize Dean Chase as the new member, we welcome him. Um we watched with a lot of interest your discussion on the Historical Preservation Commission, the candidate discussion. Um and we want to thank you very much for just, for talking more about the Historical Preservation Commission and the support that we're starting to see from you guys. Um it's very important to the historical district and the California Government Certification that makes that happen. And your help and attention helps us with our duties and service to the residents and the city. And I'd also like to mention, because it's historic, I mean, because it's Hispanic Recognition Month, we have great resources for Hispanic history, and the missions, and the rancheros, if anybody's interested in that. The question of city advisor came up at that meeting on the 21st. And we've been asking a lot about that, and we really haven't gotten the answers for a while. We did have Roger Grody for a long time, and he was great. He was really helpful and responsive. When he left, it kind of left a void. And we were mostly dealing with the, the city clerk and the previous city manager, but we didn't really feel like they were that interested. And we can talk about that at some point. However, that arrangement really didn't work, and we kind of felt like we were, left adrift for a while, as there was no real communication or help. So we'd like to know, who will be our city advisor? Our consultant, archival consultant Chuck Wilson did have a discussion, he told me, with the city clerk, and we're getting different answers about who's our city advisor. Some people say it's the clerk, some people say it's the historic consultant. So we would like direction in acquiring a city advisor. And if there's any other questions, that, since my time's up, please feel free to contact us. And we would like to help you with rethinking the Historical Preservation Commission. I like that idea a lot. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, and I'm sure we'll be reaching out to you. Any other?
I have no further comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Dana. We're going to move into Legislative Matters. Item 5A, Ordinance 1088, and this is the second reading. And I'll go ahead and ask for a recommendation or a motion, please.
Second. Please vote. Motion carried unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go into Item 5B, previously known as Item 2G. Lori?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council, for the opportunity to make a presentation about this item. The subject of this item is to appropriate $2,050,000 from the city's Special Asset Fund for the purchase of real property located at 338 Sixth Street, which is the southwest corner of Sixth and California. In summary, the city's been considering the purchase of this property for several months. It is 2.41 acres of vacant property located toward the east end of Sixth Street, fairly close, in fact, quite close to the Georgia Ingalls Equestrian Center and Pike's Peak Park. So the, the sellers of the property were interested in selling, the city entertained some discussion about the purchase, and we have reached agreement on a selling price of $2 million for the parcel. We did look at comps with our Realtor, and this is a, you know, for the size of the parcel, this is in the market for that parcel and for this type of zoning. Acquisition of this parcel will provide the city with some options with regard to providing additional parking at the events at Ingalls and at Pike's Peak, which are often needed during times of special events and at the nearby park facilities. It also provides the city with some flexibility if we need another location for public improvements, just having another site where we can consider moving other, the chess pieces, if you, if you will, around the community of some of the public improvements. It gives us that flexibility. So, you know, $2 million is a significant investment for the city of Norco, but as they say, there's not make, they're not making new dirt, right? Land is, there's only so much of it, and so having the opportunity to provide this additional parking resource and give us an additional public asset is something that we would recommend. I did provide, I did submit some questions about the parcel, so today you did get a memo from me from some, with some additional information with regard to the parcel. So we haven't completed any formal parking analysis on the site, but given the site size and the typical ratios for parking, we're looking at parking somewhere around 200 vehicles, 190 to 240. So depending on the churn of parking in a given day, that, that could park many times over, right? As cars turn over at a special event. There was a question about operating costs at Ingalls. We budget those in the Building Maintenance Division. So overall, there is, as there is with any public facility, a general fund subsidy to that facility. I can't tell you what that is today, but I think during budget time, we can look at that more closely. But you can see here, in general, that division has about $200,000 in revenues, and about $1.2 to $1.8 million in expenditures, just depending on what's going on in a given year. As you well know, this equestrian center includes two arenas, Nellie Weaver Hall, and of course, our future pole barn. And we provided you some information about the staffing. So as we stand now at Ingalls, we can accommodate 1,400 vehicles in our existing parking. And in addition, we have traditionally had the privilege of using what's referred to as the Gonzales Property. It's a property sort of to the northeast side of the property, and that provides about 300, 300 places more. So we do not, importantly, we don't own that property. This property owner has graciously allowed this access, overflow parking, and it is traditionally used for all the major events up at Ingalls. We provided you a list, and really, it's all the major events where we are using that additional parking at this time. And it is interesting, the pole barn shares that parking, right? So there's no dedicated parking for the pole barn. The only parking will be the ADA stalls that we're required to provide. So in talking with staff, we do go back and look at, you know, have we, have we, have additional parking provide us additional opportunities to provide events? So we haven't kept any written statistic about that, but reviewing this with our facilities and maintenance staff. We have had events at least twice this year, kind of large rodeo events that come to town, and apparently, this is, these folks know what they're doing, they put these events on elsewhere, and both these events, we're asking specifically if we had 2,000 spots, which we can't do that right now at all. So that's interesting, just information. So just in general, again, having more parking resources will give us the opportunity to bring in larger events that do require more parking. And then finally, we provided you with a chart of history on the Special Asset Fund. So if you look in the, really, the important number is in the left-hand column down toward the bottom. Available cash in this fund today is, is, or is, as of June 30, 2022, was 4.6 million in this fund available. You'll see the actual fund balance is total of 6.8, that includes receivables and other obligations. So really, you're looking at an available fund balance of 4.6 million. This property is $2,050,000 is the estimate, it's $2 million purchase price, and then we've included $50,000 for costs. And then I think, as you see in the staffer part, we would, we would also be including some annual, there'd be some modest costs for annual cleanup and maintenance of the site. We determined that and put it in our next year's budget. And then ultimately, as we, if we proceed with the sale, we could do some analysis on parking uses. We can also look at ways that we might provide revenue. We might be able to charge for parking there. We might be able to put in some sort of, you know, for special events or some sort of offset to the city for, on the revenue side. So we would all need to look into that down the line as we appropriate a little money to do that study and come up with some options. So with that, I'm available for questions, but the recommendation on the floor is to appropriate the $2,050,000 from Special Asset Fund, which does require a forfeits vote, and to authorize city manager to complete the purchase on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Procedural question first. I moved this over to Legislative Matters. Should it be, it should be Discussion Matters. Does this mean anything?
I have it in the discussion. We're fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so next with this is Council Questions of Staff. Any colleagues? Catherine, start with you.
No, I sent a bunch of questions, and some of those were provided in additional information that Lori just gave in the memo, so I have no further questions at this time.
Kevin? Ted? Robin? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public speaker cards, thank you.
Okay, then this will come back to Council Discussion and Action.
Mayor, just a point, the emails we got, they would be included in public comment, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And they have already been posted online for you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay.
So back to Council Discussion. In regard to the emails, we have five emails that were received, correct? And two in favor, three in opposition, and I do want to thank anybody that reached out and wrote us, or also called and text, but that's important that you stay involved with that, so that I appreciate. Ted?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. Let me explain why. I've been here like Kevin a long time. And I can recall when we first put the rodeo on, and the pro rodeo that the posse has now, 85 was our first year. Before everything was built up there, and we didn't have the east pad, that didn't exist. The fence is the, that fence for that park, where the outer park stopped where the back pins are now. That's how much we've taken off on East Pad. The fair, the first couple of years in 76 when it moved up there, what was, what is now Pike's Peak Park, was our parking lot. That was it. And I can guarantee you, I set in a tractor every year, and we as volunteers rented tractors and graded that parking lot and knocked down all the brush and all the junk that people had thrown in there 11 months before it, that was there. And that was our parking lot. That was the only parking lot for the fair and the rodeo. And the fairing, you know, was blessed that we graded. Gonzales' lot was not even used back then. The 4H barns were used, but for 4H, and that. So the other lots, there was no big east pad. That didn't exist. Of course, there was no covered arena there either, and everything that went around there, so the people. The rodeo time came, I can tell you what, we rented, there were seating for 3,000 people, and that's all we rented. We rented 2,700 or 300 there. And did we have problem parking cars? You bet. And it hadn't been for, over the years, the lot down at Sixth and Temescal, where Dr. Wong put the hospital, because that was our off-site parking. We used that. And we also used the church right there in the corner. They made money, $10 a car now, but that's what they're making. But the parking lot that was, this lot here that we're talking about, it had two homes on it. One was falling apart, and the other one did fall apart, and naturally, the fire department got to use it as a playground to play their, put their hot fire hoses on it and take it down. But we didn't have any parking back then. And so as we have increased with the east pad, we've also had the other arena, we added Clark, which wasn't, didn't exist then. So the amount of people coming in there, we have a, when I, when I look at that, we have an opportunity to at least park another 100, 200 cars, that's a blessing, especially that closely event. I've been to enough events now around that off-site parking is the way to go. And the one thing about the commercial viability of this parking lot, well, I said it, the ICESC conference, that's the International Shopping, I went to Vegas, we put on Roger Grody, he can not develop, we put all our maps out with Steve King, and we looked at that, and I'd offer him this lot, hey, there's two and a half acres. Okay, that's nice. What else you got that's closer to the freeway? The big businesses, their commercial did not want to go past Valley View. There's no, we're not interested if it's not near the freeway. So that's why it's taken for so long. We have an opportunity, as Lori said, they don't make any more dirt. So I just think this is a plus for all the groups out there with the fair, the horse week, the rodeo, and the Bruin Q and other place else, and for any future development we have, because if Gonzales' bookkeeper, who now owns that 24 acres up there, he comes up with some kind of plan, we lose Ingalls. You might as well forget about all the big events. It's going to hurt. So we need as much protection as we can. I know it's a lot of money, but we put a lot of money up into Ingalls and that event center, and it is an event center. So we have to at least park cars until somebody comes up with a better transportation system, and right now, I don't see it. So if somebody wants to run a shuttle service through town, that's one thing, but we don't have it. So we kind of live by cars, all right? So, thank you.
Kevin? Any comments?
Nothing right now.
Well, actually, this is Discussion and Action, so Catherine?
Sure. So, you know, in thinking about this item, you know, it made me think about our role as city council members. And a huge part of sitting up here on the dais is being able to justify any actions that we take to the public. And when making these decisions, I often think about the average Norco resident, and the average Norco resident who's not following along, who's not privy to all of the discussions that have been happening, you know, who might just be showing up or tuning in to the very first meeting. And will they be able to follow our logic and reasoning, and will they understand, you know, the decision-making process that we're doing and the decisions that get made? $2 million taxpayer dollars is a lot. And for me, I want to be really sure that I can justify spending that much money to the average Norco resident. You know, so when my neighbor or that average Norco resident asks me, why $2 million taxpayer dollars on this and not on this road? Why $2 million taxpayer dollars on this and not the park, improvements to the park that my kids play at? Why $2 million, you know, on this and not, you know, more city staff or more city services, or fill in the blank for any of the things that we hear about from our residents? And so for me, when we got the staff report, you know, I had a lot more questions. And we had some of those answered here, but there wasn't a formal parking analysis. I'm not going to argue on the fine points of whether Ingalls needs more parking or could use more parking, or there are events that could use more parking. But I don't know that we've examined every angle of this in looking for solutions. And I think for me to be able to justify this $2 million of taxpayer money, it needs to be looked at from every single angle. We need to look at all the possible options, the cost, the revenue, before allocating this kind of money. So at this point, I'm, I'm not able to support it today.
Robin?
So when we're thinking about this purchase, and absolutely $2 million is a substantial amount of money, I want to look at a couple of different things. When we have questions about park maintenance and park capital improvement projects, or our streets and our trails, we have Measure R now that has performed and exceeded our expectations. And we told the public with Measure R that we were going to improve parks, we were going to improve trails, and we were going to maintain public safety. We've done that, and in my opinion, in a lot of ways, we've exceeded probably the expectations of most of our residents in Norco. With Measure R and our parks and our trail improvements, we have the funds, and I think it's gotten to the point where we have this huge stack of capital improvement projects that are moving forward, and we're making progress. And so then I turn to the Special Asset Revenue Fund. And it is one-time monies, where you got one-time chunk of money from a developer, a one-time chunk of money from, well, it's basically all from developers since I've been here, that have placed money in, and with the concept of developing public assets and improving the community. So when I think of a budget, and I think of ongoing expenses, like improvements and maintenance, they should come from ongoing revenues. When we talk about a one-time, you know, expenditure, the purchase of a property, in my opinion, that should come from one-time monies as well, so that you're matching the revenues with the expenditures. So I have that in the back of my mind, just as far as, again, we're using one-time money for a one-time expenditure. When we look at the need, you know, we can talk about specific events all day long, but if we're going to look at big picture, we're talking about the George Ingalls Equestrian Event Center, one of a few that really... One of a few that really is in existence in Southern California, and we think about the fact that we're still not completely developed out at the event center. We're gonna have an amazing barn facility that is gonna host a multitude of events. And so if we can be forward-thinking enough to think that the Clark Arena has an event going on, Marina of the Arena has an event going on, the Barn has an event going on, the Veterans Memorial has an event going on, Nellie Weaver Hall has an event going on, Pike's Peak Park has an event going on. Six events in one day. If we're an event center, the, the potential is there. What is the one factor that is hindering our ability to do that? It's parking. It's just not there. And so I think it's irresponsible to a certain extent that we build out a facility that we know can't reach its maximum potential because we can't park cars. And so, um, I am thankful that you brought up that we used to park where Dr. Wong is at now, um, and we shuttled everybody up to, um, the park for events. Uh, after the Winter Festival or the Winter Christmas Parade, we shuttle people up. There are shuttle stops along Sixth Street, so the concept of shuttling people to the event center is not new. It's something that we already do. Uh, so running a shuttle from, uh, Sixth and California is not a stretch on what we already do and have the capacity to do. So I just think, um, while two million dollars can be a, a very daunting number, um, in the long run, I think it's a prudent and responsible decision, since we were subsidizing an event center, um, that we make decisions that we can, you know, have it maximize its potential, uh, to the residents and to the surrounding region. It, as more and more of these event centers go away, Norco is going to be an attractive place for people in Southern California to come and use our facility. So I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, the purchase.
Thank you. Lori, thank you for your report. Few comments that I have on this that, um, let me go back to thank the, the folks that sent emails and, and reached out to us. And maybe to answer some of the questions that were on social media, where a lot of these issues are tried. And, uh, is that, um, sometimes we see an immediate need, but also that we have to be looking twenty years down the road on this. And so when, some of the items that came up, yes, two million dollars, it's a lot of money. But when you break it down, um, we're paying nineteen dollars a square foot for this property. When we come off the freeway along Sixth Street, which, as we see commercial growth, vacant properties run from thirty-four dollars a square foot to fifty dollars a square foot to sixty-four dollars a square foot. There's a difference between commercial property and residential property. Uses are limited in residential property, not so much in commercial, 'cause you have the opportunity to make money. So, to me, when you break it down, yeah, two million's a lot, but nineteen dollars a foot, that's not a bad price, when you look at what else is available in that market. But part of this also to me is that, um, being that the immediate need that we see, and obviously with the growth of Ingles, which is for, for community, it's for all of us, is that when you purchase land, you also have to have an exit. What is your exit strategy if this does not work out? And what I looked at with our potential, this property is in the path of growth. It comes down to location, location, location. The natural growth of our C-four commercial corridor is down Sixth Street. So, there will always be an exit to sell this property if the parking doesn't work out or we move in a different direction for commercial, which then lends to the other basic of land use. What is the highest and best use of this land? It puts us in that position to dictate, to dictate that to somebody else that wants to invest in commerce and development. And then the last is, you know, what our market conditions are right now. And land will always appreciate in a marginal market. It, it's a hard asset, and as Lori mentioned, it's becoming a scarce asset. It's a smart way to go, and I'm very comfortable in, in, in my support of this. So with that, if there's no other further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have one thing.
Sure, Kevin.
So, um, I concur with my colleagues, um, there's, there's, there's an aspect of this that in reading the comments on social media, um, I know I hear things like teen centers and stuff. When I sat as a commissioner, um, for Park and Rec, we called, we really looked into teen centers. And teen centers actually don't work. They, they are not attended, and what essentially happens with families is up until the kid is eleven, twelve, about that age, if they're playing sports, the parent decides whether or not they have the next Mickey Mantle or they have the next Olympic soccer player. Once it's determined they don't, that's the age that becomes very, very difficult. It's that twelve, thirteen, up to eighteen. And Norco actually has more to do for teens in some ways than people realize. And you have all the playing fields, so a lot of people play sports. Unfortunately, if you don't make club by the time you're twelve, it's very hard to get those kids involved in the rec sports. But some of the big things we have are the, the rodeos, the teen rodeos, we have the FFA, we have volunteerism at Norco Fair. I'm hoping we're actually gonna take our December seventh to Norco High School. We're trying to find ways to engage teenagers. So in my view, Ingles Park, in the future, is going to become more and more of a community asset to our teenagers than it is now. That is a very hard group to, uh, not to crack. So, I think that anything we can do to foster that, and in, and Robin, I had never thought about this. You're right, you could literally have six events here at the same time. So, the second part of this is, is that we have to face the reality that laws are changing. And a target for apartments is Sixth Street, because they're getting ready to pass laws in which they do, you can take a commercial property, and some of the projections are, you as a developer will be able to go in and say, this is an underutilized commercial piece of property. I'm gonna ministerially or by right build apartments. That's coming. Right now, they're just focusing on, uh, strip malls and things like that, but who's to say you have three or four properties to the west of that? Who's to say somebody doesn't come along and buy those, and then you have apartments? Now, the real question is, and one of the things that, that I saw at the League of Cities is, I don't believe most elected officials are telling their constituents the truth. I don't think they're saying, I really, for housing, I really support building a fourteen-unit apartment complex in a single-family neighborhood. They talk about it amongst themselves, but they don't, I'm sure their constituents don't know that. And one of the things I think we're responsible for in Norco is I think the vast majority of constituents want us as much as possible to protect the single-family neighborhoods. And I'm, I'm just really worried that if we don't purchase this property, and maybe some others down the line, that we don't strategically, because that's not to say we're not doing our part, but we on the ground know better where these things should go. We're working on several projects that I think cover, um, the kind of housing that the state is mandated we build. But I think we all know that there's certain places where it just doesn't fit. And so I think just twofold, one, I think that we need to more and more put as much resources as we can in Ingles Park. Uh, it's gonna cost money, but what are our kids worth? What are our teenagers worth? And if we can find things up there that they will do, um, and it also brings them into the community, and then the second part is, I would just hate to see that as an apartment complex someday. So I'm in favor of this also, and, um, I really appreciate the comments of my colleagues up there, um, all of you.
You wanna make a motion?
Motion that we, uh, continue with the purchase of the property, is that good, Colin?
Second.
Does Councilmember Bash make a motion for the recommended action, including authorizing the city manager to complete the property purchase on behalf of the city?
Please vote. Aaron Newton.
No, I pushed it. And my vote is a yes.
Okay. Motion passes with Catherine, or Councilmember Alaman voting no. So it was a four.
And that meets the four fifths criteria. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, uh, Item Six A, acceptance of the Hillside Avenue project is, I guess we gotta get out the gold stars for Chad and Sam.
Eric, counsel?
Good evening, how are you, Sam?
Living the dream. So this is, um, obviously, Item Six A, acceptance of the Hillside Avenue pavement project, along with a progress update on the multiple projects we have in town for streets. Picture of Hillside Avenue looking north. This is, this is, this is a picture of Hillside Avenue looking north, not in the greatest condition, a lot of alligatoring, patches in the street, trail fence looking pretty sad, no trees, basically in definitely need of a tune-up. Going along the little road here from left to right, basically, this is kind of summarizing what the actual project went through. First and foremost was, we actually widened the street. We went from a basically twenty-four-foot section to a thirty-six-foot section, curb-to-curb, basically allowing the, the parking on the east side of the street, where previously it was just in the dirt shoulder. Along with that is, we actually came through and, um, moved lots of impediments in the street or in, in the parkways, including jail boxes, which are basically just the old-school storm drains, along with actually, uh, private property encroachments, including fence lines, brush, trees, succulents, everything. Going further along the road, we came and actually installed curb and gutter, which is a very, very big thing in this town, because without curb and gutter, you really can't direct water into the facilities that we have for storm drains. So, as you know, most towns, without that, it just goes from property to property. Then, going even further to the right, we actually put new trees in with an irrigation service to replace the trees that had been, not been, uh, taken down over the years by Edison. And these trees actually, especially for this project, were actually the ones that are low-hanging, so keep Edison's grimy hands off them. So, poof, there we go, here's the street, pretty nice. You can see they actually got a lot wider, we have new asphalt, you can see the curb and gutter. The people on the left hand, or the west side of the street are super stoked, because now they're not getting wet. Just to give you a little background, there was probably six or seven houses that had a two-foot berm in front of their house, because they got wiped out every single time it rained. And those new catch bases now will ensure that they don't get that same type of flooding. So it really worked out. You can see we got the trees in there, we got the new trail fence. Everyone's happy, maybe not some of the residents, 'cause people are flying down that street now, but that's another story. So kind of, this is kind of a, a, a time lapse going from left to right of what the street used to look like. You know, nothing needed, needed to repair. Middle picture kind of showing the new curb and gutter started coming on the left-hand side, and of course, the final product on the right. But basically, that was kind of more of a summary of the Hillside project. Overall, speaking which, we actually in this town have about fourteen square miles of roadway, or actually, sorry, fourteen square miles of area, I think it's fifteen, but we'll go with that. Two hundred forty-five public streets, about a hundred miles, kind of a lot. Yeah, so I, yeah, so basically this, what we've done today is, we're actually going through the Hillside Avenue, a notice of, of completion, but trying to, to segue into kind of like all the stuff we've done. So in this case, overall, in the last five years, actually almost six years, we basically have had repaired over thirty-seven miles of street, which is about thirty-seven percent, or about two, uh, one-third of what the city. So that's been actually very good, considering how long in this town so many streets have actually needed repair. So, this, this actually, uh, graph kind of shows you the kind of different treatments we've had. Going from right to left is, uh, the most, the smallest types of treatments, which is slurry seal, which is kind of an asphalt binder they put on top, all the way to kind of reconstructions, which is basically a complete removal of the asphalt, the base and reconstruction with curb and gutter, and of course, whitening. Um, obviously, it's four more expensive on the widening of construction projects since, since, or hence, there's only a couple of them. This is actually one of the most important graphs, this actually, and thank, thank you very much, council. This basically has two different graphs, it's showing the overall amount of money spent by the city between two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty-one, with the light orange, um, between, so five years, for instance, in the total, we've spent almost sixteen million dollars. In one year, the fiscal two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the deep, deeper orange or darker orange, we're almost spending the same amount of money in one year. So, that overall total, the last, the last three graphs break down the different funding. Measure A, or Measure R, which is huge, again, one year, six million dollars almost. Within the past five years, it was two-point-two million, pretty impressive. And then, of course, the street fund, Measure A fund, and the SB one fund. So, to add all that up, a little bit of progress each day adds up to big results. Coming around the mountain, with, if there's no any questions, staff's recommending that we accept the Hillside Avenue projects to complete, and thank you very much. Any questions?
Does council have any questions, or staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Catherine.
How can we please share all this wonderful information with our residents? Excellent.
We're definitely gonna work on that, taking this information, augmenting the city's websites, uh, certainly putting this information on the top stories and adding that there. So we really want to highlight what we've been, been doing along with what we are going to do.
That would be great, the graphics are great, it's clear, it's easy to understand. It's really good data to share with our residents, I just was asked today about a street, so, thank you.
Well, and if I can add, please, I want to thank our staff, I want to thank Chad and Sam and working with Kelly in putting this together. Kelly, I think, is the, um, the, the architect of these great graphics, um, in collaboration with Public Works, so, great team.
Ted?
Sam, I'm gonna burst your bubble just a little bit. Go back over to your chart, and over twenty-nine million invested. And just as a, you might want to put on a footnote, the SB, uh, SB one ro- road and maintenance fund, that didn't start then till two thousand eighteen or so, so your five-year plan there. And then our Measure R funds, prior to that, on your thing, that didn't start until two thousand nineteen. So I just, little asterisk, so people are gonna ask, I would've, 'cause I looked at it. I know, I know, I know, that's okay, just, just, just that, either of them is a good deal, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, no other questions? Si, no? Nope, not yet.
Well, thank you very much, councilman.
I do have some questions about Sam, but not, not right here. Do we have any public comment?
We don't have any public comments, may I ask, sorry?
Sam, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Uh, please. And, uh, back to any, uh, council discussion and action, um, Lori, I want to compliment you and your staff, and also with Catherine's comment, I like the graphics, and I think this is gonna make it, it's much easier for me, much easier for our residents. And, um, and Chad, I mean, once again, credit to you and Sam and your staff that knowing what the cost impacts are, that clarification with your specifications and your plans, that you're able to get that amount of mileage done with costs, costs increasing as they are. So, once again, kudos to you and your department. If there's no further council discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Second. Please vote. Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. So do, do we all want to take a quick break and just laugh real hard and then move on? So, um, the entire side of that room. Anything? Okay. City attorney, Colin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, great to be here, very excited, and I look forward to working with the council more than a half already.
City manager, Laurie? Ted?
And Dana, I don't know if this, the housekeeping, I don't think that mic's working right. If you can have the school district check it, because I can barely hear the speakers at all, I didn't want, Kevin was no problem, but it just, okay, thank you.
Robin? Catherine?
Yeah, just want to thank the city staff who volunteered this weekend, and our community services department who's putting on events. We have a new event yesterday that was shared, and, you know, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, Dia de los Muertos, the first time City of Norco is gonna be doing that event, so I'm very excited for that. And just want to thank everyone for their, their hard work on that. Thank you.
Kevin?
I just to note that today is Ageism Awareness Day, October seventh, twenty twenty-two, and, you know, that's one of the things that we don't think about, and the truth of the matter is, our seniors in our society are probably the most discriminated against populace, literally, almost across the board, across the entire nation. So just think about a senior like me, and a couple other people around here.
Well, my last comments are not really city-related, but kind of in, in honor of John Harper, and I'm gonna look toward, at Kevin, and I'm gonna look at Ted with this primarily. Today is the last day of the regular baseball season, okay? The Chicago Cubs were big winners this year, okay? They won the last eight out of twelve, and of course, did not make it to any division playoffs. So I sent a note to Harper today, and I said Cubs win out, big, big winners, once again, wait till next year. And this is what John replied to me, "The optimism of baseball's next season, still undefeated." So with that, we're adjourned.